Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if I could add an addition to it, we had a lengthy discussion on the Swamp Rabbit Trails at the September 27th meeting and comments were listed in the minutes from Councilmember Gibson and Councilmember DeWorke. I would like mine added in some form as well. I believe I commented in support of the Swamp Rabbit Trail bridges. Of the Swamp Rabbit Trail expenditure for the bridges for safety reasons. And if we could add something that effect for the minutes, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much. Are there any other corrections or additions? If not, the clerk will add Dorothy Dow's comments to the September 27th minute. Any objections? If not, those minutes then will be put in the records. And now let's see, I don't see any names to speak to council. Clerk, no one here.
We do not have anyone.
Okay, I'm not going to adjourn right now. I'm sorry. All right, we'll go to our consent agenda at this particular time. It's a motion.
Second.
All right, moving probably second clerk call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye.
Our next item on the agenda is our regular agenda is for new business ordinance first reading, 1615A.
An ordinance to appropriate $2,407,197 in funding in the Capitol Projects Hospitality Tax and Local Accommodations Tax Fund for construction of Swamp Rabbit Trail pedestrian bridges.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I have a question. Question? But unfortunately, it's not for Karen Crawford. Sorry. I think this is a Clint question. Just in reading the ordinance, and I'm really asking for my own knowledge and maybe for the record for what it's worth, but in the summary, it says that the proposed ordinance. The Woodrefrode, excuse me, the Woodrefrode Bridge, which is part of the county's responsibility, will be handled by the county. In other words, the summary says, well, there it is right there. The Woodrefrode, the last sentence, the Woodrefrode Bridge will be handed handled by Greenville County. This is the swamp, the Lawrence Road extension. So that is existing, and I'm just kind of curious in a nutshell, what is their responsibility on that?
So I did speak with Ty Houck with Greenville County, and they are entering into negotiations with Palmetto Infrastructure as well, the same contractor we're using. For making some upgrades to that existing rail bridge. There is an existing bridge overpass there now, and basically that will involve them doing some installing some new handrails. They got to do a new deck across it for the trail itself. There's some other miscellaneous upgrades.
But they are, they, the county are responsible for bringing that up to codes that apply in this area.
Correct.
And that's the bridge that has the steel rail about this high, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that was an existing bridge. My understanding was they always considered since it was an existing bridge that they would handle those upgrades.
And that trail can't open until they get that done because now we've got people riding biking. Okay.
At least at that point, yeah, they to get across, you would have to have.
And anybody other than Ty, was any conversations?
Did not speak with their procurement or purchasing department, but.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Just got a quick comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I continue to believe that this money would be better spent spreading it out amongst the multiple other intersections and crossings that we have on Swamp Rabbit Trail. And I think that if that were done, we could do so and make these, those, all of these crossings safer through at grade improvements. But given the council's resolution last meeting to move forward, I will be supporting this ordinance.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Ordinance passed, item 16A, new business resolution, first and final reading.
A resolution to request the removal of an approximately 3.20 mile section of Augusta Street from the state highway system.
So moved.
Second.
Clint?
Clint, I have one question. The, and don't answer if you don't know, but.
Yeah, right.
Great advice.
On typical requests like this to the state. And what's the hit rate? I mean, what, how likely is this for the state to say, yeah, it's, it's good? Or do you, or is it just a, you don't know?
Well, history would tell you SEDOT is very willing to give up their right of ways. They've got more than what they can keep up with and manage as it is. We've done a lot of road takeovers in the past.
Yeah.
Augusta Street is a very important road in their network and in the greater transportation network. So this is probably, they'll probably look at this a little harder than they would some of the other streets we've discussed in the past. But based on our conversations we've had with them, they've given me no doubt that they would, they have informed me they would highly consider giving us this.
So it's not an automatic no, it's not an automatic yes, it's somewhere in between.
It would have to go to their commission to vote on that.
But we are within our purview to ask for compensation for taking that over, given the maintenance requirements and the storm, the drainage conditions.
I think we're within our purview of whether they consider that or not. I'm not.
Thou who do not ask shall not get, but I do see this as our way of supporting the surrounding neighborhoods on Augusta Road and a big step forward for our, our ability to impact those neighborhoods in a favorable way.
I agree.
Any other comments or questions? And we need to let all the other neighborhoods who we've talked about that Clint and his group is evaluating, and this is just the beginning of our trying to prioritize for safety. Clerk, it's a resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, no. Mr. Manager?
We don't have any staff reports tonight.
Okay, they're working too hard. They had this weekend, bless their heart, they're still living from the rain and all the other things and all of the other things, ooh, all of the other things that went on this weekend, et cetera. Plane crashes, shootings, all kinds of stuff. But we thank, thank the staff. We appreciate all the work that you have done as well. And, and congratulations again to our manager for being able to survive a wedding. Blessings, being able to survive. Anybody else?
Yes, no comment.
If I may, you're referencing this, you're alluding to it, and Councilmember Dow mentioned in her prayer, but special kudos to the tremendous effort, hard work that goes into every fall for Greenville, particularly.
Outstanding.
After winter highs.
I went down two days. It was great. You guys did a fantastic job. Kudos to everybody involved.
I sent you my picture on the Ferris wheel.
Oh, oh, thanks. Yeah, I'm so proud of you for letting them live a little, little while alone. Thank you so very, very much. We had, I had lots of family members that were down there, and I think we've got to check on that VIP tent. were down there. And I think we've got to check on that VIP tent. And Dow, it must have been the bomb because I expect us to have us a VIP sometime soon, et cetera. So put that on, on the agenda.
That's because you got five drink tickets on Saturday in the VIP thing.
Okay, we didn't use those five drink tickets. We bribed other people, et cetera.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank y'all so much. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say with the VIP cards, you know, you only get four beers.
I don't drink beer. It's not good. But I can always be bribed. You didn't hear that, chief. Okay. Anyway, thank y'all so very much and the staff, the technology people. Thank y'all so much. Y'all have really helped us out. Now, whoever puts this table back, remember, we have not gangway, but we need more room. Old people need room. Thank you. Let's push it up a little bit. Y'all have a very good week. May God bless you. Your turn. Good night.